All right, it is now 6:15 and we have resumed our Selectments meeting for Monday, January 8th. We are in our Updates and Discussions phase. Town Administrator addition to local emergency team. That's just an appointment we need to make, right Liz?
Yes.
So, I make a motion that we appoint Elizabeth Dennehy to the local emergency team.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
So, we now have, Lauren, it's you?
Pat. Right, I'm in, I'm the Director, Chief salesman, Jim O'Kee, Highway Secretary, and now Elizabeth, Town Administrator.
Great. Perfect, very good.
And just for the folks at home, we now of course have a standalone Local Emergency Planning Committee. One of the things that I proposed to you folks, we talked about when kicking off the Emergency Response Plan for the town, and it has to do with things like shelter operations, its plans for like memorandums of understanding for like transportation, food from Cisco, private contractors that may be needed in emergencies, all those types of things rolled into an actually designed plan. And FEMA has a template that they put out that helps us to do that, so we're actually, we're starting to have meetings, we've had one, we're gonna have another one this week, and we're starting to lay out the framework for that. And so it's a good time for Elizabeth now that she's more than willing to get involved with that, and it'll be, it's actually a really good time that she's here now. So, what I do need, and I'm gonna say it on camera, is I need the cooperation from boards and committees in this town that are very integral to part to that Emergency Response Plan, Board of Health, the police, highway, all those departments that play a big part. So I'm gonna ask them for some help and some involvement also too, because when we have a problem, I'm gonna be coming looking for them.
Okay.
So that's a great thing, and welcome Elizabeth, thank you for your great work.
Thank you. Terrific.
Awesome.
All right, um, let's go into Townhouse Water Pipe Break. Who wants to speak to that?
Um, I can speak to it if you'd like. So, the incident has been cleaned up for the most part. Servpro was here, and I do think that it's, the chief had a very quick response time, but I do think it's important to acknowledge all of Bridgette's actions as well as Steve Sorrow, our in-house custodian. They were really the two main people kind of where the rubber met the road. They spent countless hours here, were checking in each and every day, you know, spending their time here making sure that the contractors got in and out, and that there were people here, you know, at the various times that different entities were coming, we had the insurance adjuster come. For people watching at home that may not be up to speed, we had a water pipe burst here at the townhouse, and it created a fairly extensive amount of damage. We've been working with the chief, he's been incredibly helpful as far as working with us to get the fire alarm panel replaced, so we've been trying to get an idea of the cost for that, and he's been very helpful with getting prices and specifications for us. And as we mentioned, Bridgette has been working hand-in-hand with the insurance company, with the adjuster, and there were various other entities, we've been getting prices as we need to do and just kind of keeping a record of all that. So she's really been kind of gone above and beyond with this, and Steve did a lot of work. I didn't realize fully what goes into a cleanup of that, that significance. Servpro did a great job, they got us up and running in the plumber that we had also, he was very quick, did a fantastic job. But Steve did have to spend quite a bit of time here, even just washing the floors and kind of getting the building ready for occupancy, so that we could continue to serve the public. And he did a fantastic job with that, getting us back up and running, making sure that the environment was such that it was conducive for work, as well as to have the public in here and have a safe building, so he did a really great job with that as well. You can still see some of the residual damage, the town clerk unfortunately sustained a lot of damage, you can see the missing ceiling tiles, we have, we're getting, we're in the process of getting that stuff addressed, so we're getting prices and everything, and moving forward with that. So there'll be more to come on that, obviously, as, you know, as quotes come in and we move forward with, with the work.
One of the things that's dropped out of that is, it turns out, the wiring in here is not to code.
I can't believe that.
So, we're gonna have to address the building.
Okay.
Okay, this is the right time to do it, since we have to make this whole, we might as well make the whole thing whole. I don't know what that means yet in terms of cost, but we'll see.
Yeah, the fire alarm panel and the wiring and everything, it was kind of cause for concern, but, you know, we'll do what we have to do to move ahead and get everything up and running, so.
I spoke to the insurance company regarding the panel, and because of the loss and that being affected, if to, in order to replace it, if it has to bring us up to code, we have insurance coverage for that.
Oh really?
Good.
Terrific.
That's great.
It was part of one of the reviews that we did, that if something electrical was to happen or, you know, you lose something and you can't replace something anymore because it's obsolete.
Right.
What do you do? So I, there's coverage, so it will bring us up today.
That's a great, great news.
So I just, like I said, we need the quotes.
Well, that's what we're working on, and we have some, and the chief got another one today from an entity in Pembroke, so we're, we're moving forward with getting the quotes, because we have to make sure, aside from the wiring aspect also too with the fire code, and make sure that, that what we're getting is, is what we need to ensure compliance, so.
I will get your quotes and give them to Liz. Right now we've got two for the insulation, I have two for the, three to replace the ceiling tiles, and we'll go down to the jog that's there, and we got, I'm gonna do one for the floor, I just think if we keep going, we're cutting, not cutting corners, but I'm not having a general contractor, I think you lose money that way. We are, Steve paid $16 to go get the pipe installation and wrap the pipe, he's talented, he can do things like that. So, the insurance company, I asked them to do preventative, it can, things like that be reimbursed, and he said yes, and if we wanna go that route and have someone do the panel, someone do the floor, someone do the ceiling, great.
Terrific.
So, we'll save money that way.
And we'll get the work done.
And get the work done.
Perfect, very good. Tara, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm just posting the update.
Okay, all right.
Tara did pick out some rug color today, it's happy.
Perfect.
And then Liz and I and Tara, we kinda all agreed on the tile for the floor, because it will be going through the lobby into the lunchroom and the small area by the vault, and then we were discussing to see maybe to bring it down to right what the.
With the double doors.
With the double doors are, and at least be all one color going through.
Okay, all right.
So, it's a pretty legit.
Good work?
Yeah, lots of, lots of people did a bunch of good work over a holiday, and I think this board was relieved to have that kind of effort.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Corn nation.
Thank you, well done.
It's a lot of work.
From one situation onto another, this isn't on our agenda, but we became aware of a situation with the generator at the, at the Denny Elementary School, and we've got John Williamson from the school committee to come in and give us an update on that.
Thankfully, this is not the week the building's in trouble. So we actually, we had a couple of issues at the school, starting Wednesday into Thursday with some positive developments on Friday. The first is that they came in to test fire the generator on Wednesday because of the impending storm on Thursday. I think probably the simplest way to explain is that they test fired it and blew up. So, that was a problem, certainly a lot of concern with the, with the school and the school committee because of the forecasted temperatures coming after the storm. By some miracle, we did not lose power during this time period where we were out, but the generator was down and it was nothing to do to fix it in the short term. As a result of that, we worked to get a temporary generator hooked up, which they were able to do later today on Friday, so the school does have appropriate backup power, and that's of course particularly an important issue from an occupancy perspective due to the fact that the generator powers the fire pumps, which when it doesn't power them, then there's no sprinkler system, and that's themselves a can't have school. To add to that, it was Thursday late afternoon or evening, there was electrical smell, fire smell in the building, basically that was a heater pump?
It was the well pump.
Well pump.
What happened was, it's a three-phase system that comes into the school, and out of the street, a fuse blew and we lost one of the legs, one of the phases. And it's a three-phase motor that runs the well pump, and it failed. The pump kicked on like it normally would, and it failed, and I believe it destroyed, wiped out. The concern for the fire pump of course is the, if those pumps were to kick on in the event of a fire, it would have been about five minutes and the fire pumps would have failed. So, from our standpoint, of course we got Eversource moving right away, I had to post the fire watch, I had to put Bob Cowling down, the electrical inspector down, he was comfortable with the fact that we shut the well pump down, and we were just concerned about getting that third leg up and Eversource, it took about four hours, they were busy. So we posted a fire short for the short term, and we were able to now get the power restored fully, we did a complete walk-through of the school, no other additional problems were found, so I cleared it, it was good to go. And of course then we had, now we have the backup power put in, because in addition to, it's, it's part of the code for occupancy that the fire pump has backup power, because if we had lost it during whatever, and we had a fire post, we would have never been able to manage that. So they have, the school committee, they have taken care of that, addressed it on a temporary basis, so we're not gonna be able to figure out how to pull it.
And then on Friday, they also fixed the pump to blow up, not on the Eversource case, but the stuff inside the building, so they actually had school today, so that's, that's a positive.
Very good.
So, what that means, certainly there's costs associated with that, but then there's also an ongoing cost associated with the temporary generator, that's only about $2,000 for the first week and $1,500 per week for each week thereafter, so that is not a medium-term solution even. So, based on what I understand, so far today, they've been working with a couple, trying to get some free quotes, also work out what the cost would be, so a couple things. One, what is the cost to repair the existing generator? That looks to be in the eight to 10 or $12,000 range, just to repair the generator, which at this point is at least 15 years old, a little bit older than that. The generator company did verify that this was just, it was just what it was, it was a failure, it's nothing to do with maintenance or anything like that, it's just that sometimes this stuff happens. Unfortunately, it had to be when it did, and here we are. We also are looking into the cost of replacing the 100 kilowatt generator with a new one. At, at this point, the backup envelope estimates, we're getting written, estimate bids on that, is looking to be about $25,000 to $30,000 for the equipment, plus the cost of installation, that also depends to some extent on what they find and how everything is set up there, and whether it is set up correctly to begin with, which apparently is a, something we're scratching our heads a little bit about right now. So, we'll see about that. They're also pricing out the next generator up, it'll be a 130 kilowatt generator, and trying to figure out whether there would be some benefit to getting a slightly larger unit, be able to do more at the school in the event of a power loss. There's some open questions right now about what that would mean with respect to how the heating system is set up, and whether you'd be able to run part of it, or you've got to make changes to the system to be able to do that, and whether, even if you made changes to the system, 130 kilowatt generator would suffice. And that, and that is another, it's supposed to be about $5,000 to $10,000 depending on configuration of that next one. So, so really where we are right at the moment, I don't have any specific answers, other than, you know, we need to move on this sooner rather than later, because we have weekly costs associated with the temporary generator, but likely, my guess is at this point that would be, at least be in this week and next week for the generator, because we're trying to get everything together, and it's gonna take a couple days for some folks to get out, to look at it, draw up the bids, and then I assume that they don't just have this sitting in the back of the truck. So, we gotta order it, have it delivered, and so on and so forth, and even for parts too, that's first one we ordered, brought in, never rate it. That's staff piece of it. The, not good news, but the not-so-bad news is that we do have some surpluses in the budget this year, particularly in both education-wise, for anyone who's been watching, school committee meetings, that has been, that's been surplus all year, we haven't changed, because we had an open slot and someone could go, that was budgeted as well. So that was money that is destined to be returned to town, we get to the end of the year, so the hope is, is that even with these numbers, which are not small, that we're not looking at money income from a source, you know, outside of the school budget to do that, we're gonna have to do whatever transfers we would need, we have a discussion on that, but we can get this sorted, because without the generator, we can't have the school.
Right.
If we can get it so we can use the heat, so we can use that as a warming center, that would be terrific.
That I think has been many people's thoughts on that, are, the concern at this point, and this is someone talking to Bob Cowling about how many things everything's set up, is that it may be difficult for us to determine at a given time whether the next size generator can do that. If we can be preoccupied on that, then that would certainly be an avenue, that would be worth, or making some agreement, of course, with the Selectment, as long as school committee is able to kind of push ahead with that. Certainly, if we can do it for five or 10 grand more, and probably a little bit of additional money to be able to rearrange.
Sure.
从a logical perspective, I mean, it seems like sort of a no-brainer, because the generator here is not exactly a new one.
Right.
And that would be great, but that's a little up in the air at the moment.
Okay.
Definitely something we're looking at, which is why we started to look at the bigger generators as well, if it's that simple.
Great, Bob Cowling is an excellent resource too on how to navigate through that, he's usually been a great help, certainly had something to do with him, and understands a complicated issue.
Yeah, he thought it'd be able to, thinks it's all one heating system, and as a result, you'd really have to have a generator to run the entire building.
Ah, is it?
Is probably not 130 kilowatt.
I can imagine, yeah, it's different here, handlers that move, heat pumps that move along, okay.
So, it would probably be some reengineering, I don't know how big, whether that's bigger than a Redbox or not. So, and because we're spending $1,500 a week, we don't really necess, so, it's a little early yet to know where we're going with it, but we're looking at those things in the extent that we can get it, get this nailed down in the next, for a few years, by this week.
Anything you need from me, of course, by the time that you get this.
And I'd really like to thank you for all of your work with this, and I know that Peter is really appreciative of that, and also Peter Mino, who's both a principal and our building facilities manager, and more of this, more of this last week, building facilities manager, so there's a lot of good work done there, but.
Yeah, he got right on the one with me that night, so we have a very good relationship, and it made a difference, in this case, a big difference.
So ultimately, the decision, how much kilowattage etc. is made by?
Well, I mean, I think, I think the school committee has to make a decision, that said, looking to do this in partnership, this is a big expenditure, and we're doing it in sort of an emergency situation, I prefer it not just to be up to us. I mean, you know, in an ideal world, we could get a temporary generator in there for, you know, a reasonable amount of money and be able to figure it all out and go to town meeting and do it. That's not what we're left with, we'd spend, we'd spend the cost of the generator before we got to town meeting. So, I think we need a little more information, and we'll certainly reach out to Christine and find out, and we'll have to sort of see where we can go from there.
Yeah, the communicator system's been great, it's from you, from Liz, from the school committee, it's been, it's been good.
No, I would prefer to be able to take the time and could to think it all through and come up with the ideal plan, we're just not quite there, so we're gonna have to invest a little.
Great, well thank you so much for all your efforts, and everyone that's helped in with this. So, we'll just continue to work together, we're looking, we're exploring grant options, I know the chief is looking to see if there's anything with MEMA, we've reached out to Seth Pickering, Old Colony Planning Council, anybody that may have some feelers out to, to see if there are any grants available for a generator.
Yeah, I did, I made contact that very day with MEMA, if it's storm-related, that's one thing, then other than that, it's, they're not gonna be able to be any help to us.
Okay, so MEMA's off the table.
Then you can use the contractors that they use, but we knew a few already anyway, and certainly Milton Kapp was the best quickest remedy to get us covered up and so on.
Terrific. All right, very good, everybody have anything else?
Yeah, so if we do unearth something with the grant, then we can make a decision whether we try and do something bad and have the generator for next week, if that's gonna offset.
Right.
You know, those are the, it's just gonna be a, you know, making the best of the situation, it's really just.
And is there any value in keeping the old generator? Could that be used in another building if it were to be repaired? I don't know.
Right.
I don't know how serious the, the fail was.
Seems to be pretty significant.
Okay.
Again, it does also appear to be repairable, so we have to make that decision about what the benefits are, and we have every time of us to sort of stay, where to go with this.
All right, well we'll keep in touch if we unearth any grant opportunities, and just let us know what we can do to help, John.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for the update.
Do you want to invite back for the next meeting?
Well, we're not meeting next week, we won't be meeting until February 5th is our, will be our next meeting, that's correct, right?
Yeah.
So, I don't know, did we have something on the 20?
The 22nd.
Oh, the 22nd, okay, so not next weekend, the following week?
Yeah, I would bet we're gonna need to make a decision.
I would think so too.
We can just stay in touch.
Absolutely.
And make sure that.
We're feeling comfortable, we're in emergency mode here, particularly spending $1,500 bucks a week.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think that, my guess is that the number, you know, sort of helped to find that, and then taking, you know, taking into consideration what professionals tell us about the existing generator.
So you just want an update though?
Sure, and I can.
Would you like to come back and have your guy?
Either John can give us an update, or Liz, or I can update.
We have some to talk about too, so we'll.
Want to put you on for the 22nd?
Yeah, why don't you do that anyways?
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Does that work for you, John?
No.
Okay.
No, 22nd, no, that's not good, but we'll, we'll keep in touch and we'll make sure to get an update.
Okay, so maybe even February 5th, even though it'll probably be after the fact?
Yeah, why don't you put us on Saturday, and we should, you probably need to come back and talk to the corporation on the special ad review, talk about many months ago.
Okay.
That'll be on, on topic as well as anything else.
Perfect, okay.
So I'm gonna put you on for.
That sounds great.
The 5th, 2/5, stabilization front and an update on the Denny.
Yep.
Perfect.
And you will have to keep the work between the head house and the back end.
Great, thanks John very much. Okay, so, the next item on our agenda is firing EMS consultant, MRI draft pending. We're not gonna be seeing this until what, February?
February.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was a little late for your meeting, did you do the town?
I wanna see John one minute.
Yes, they did, I wrote down the vote.
Yes, we appointed Liz to the local emergency team.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, Old Townhouse Review Lease, so this is the Historic Society Building.
There you go.
Did you get a chance to review the lease?
I did.
Yeah, I did too.
Am, am I right that it was, it ended last year?
Uh, no, it, it's five years, well actually, I think it's this April.
So, it's five years, at least the date on this was January 2012.
It says in here that it's April, the lease. Where is it?
Hmm?
Were we talking about the lease?
Yes, yep, we're on to the lease. All right, the initial term of the lease commencing on April 23rd, 2007, so it's five years, I think it shall be successive.
Five years would have been 12, and then another five years would have been 17.
So it looks like it did then. It did expire then.
So.
April of 2017.
Right.
Well, I don't know, did it expire, or was it, is it automatically renewed?
Well, I think it, it does say that it automatically renews too.
Yeah.
That you have two years if you want to break it, but that it, it automatically renews with the same conditions.
Yeah, okay. So, my concern is, I would like to see us, since it's a town building, take over the custodial piece of it, which I think Elizabeth ran some numbers on what it would cost us this year.
Yes, so it's.
Additional, over in what we're paying right now.
Yes, my numbers, so it's a difference of about $6,000.
For this year?
Well, above and beyond what he was budgeted for, yeah.
I thought that was next year.
Well, that would be for the 20 hours next year.
For the next six months, I mean. For the next six months, what would?
Yeah, adding the five hours, I'm pretty sure that that would bring him up, is between five or six.
Five and six thousand?
Yeah, I think it was around $2,000.
For the year, so for the. For a year, so it'd be like $2,000 to $2,500 for, for six months.
To have Steve maintain the Historic Society Building?
Yes, well, yeah.
Okay.
In effect, what we're doing is, we're bringing him to the 20 hours, which would give him benefits, but I think the big thing is that, he's done a terrific job here, we've seen, you know, he made the cabinet over there now, that we have. So I think the townhouse, the Old Townhouse needs somebody who's in there once a week, making sure that it stays clean. We're talking about getting a use form, Elizabeth and Jessica Kinsman, who's the president of the Historical Society, so that when people use it, it spells out what their role is. But I think, still think above and beyond that, we need this custodial part. And I think also, I think he's gone up and spread sand on the, you know, we had the accident up there.
Right.
I just think it makes terrific sense to have him do it. And it's not their building, it's our building.
I have the number here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, he put that down?
Yeah, that we had talked to him about, yeah. To divert, there was, with one of the slip and fall incidents, they found that the drainage was coming out and pooling in the area of the entrance, and so he was pretty quick at our suggestion to go and purchase, you know, the things that attach to the downspout so that you can divert it however you want it.
That you can direct it, sure.
So away from the path of pedestrians.
Okay.
I did have that number, actually, I was getting a little ahead of myself here, looking at next year, it would be $2,112, thereabouts, to have him onboard for the rest of the year for the extra hours.
And that would be out of buildings and maintenance?
Um, I guess, it would be out of, when do we pay him monthly now?
He comes out of a townhouse account under a salary item for custodial services, but we might be able to work something out with that. Right now, there's a, a small balance remaining, obviously with the emergencies that we've had and everything, it's kind of cutting into that. And one of the other things that, that I think is important to note is, when you look at his hourly rate and do the math, as I mentioned, it's about, let's see, it's roughly a $6,000 difference, thereabouts, between six and seven, because you have to count in benefits as well.
So, for a full year next year?
And that includes the benefits?
Yes, so for.
Six thousand?
For a full year next year with benefits, a. Yes, so for, for a full year next year with benefits, assuming the standard cost of living adjustment that wage and personnel typically does, you're looking at roughly $20,000 in total. And that would be for him essentially taking on the custodial duties and building maintenance duties of all of, of our buildings. I believe he even spread sand at the library when I was there Saturday. I know they have a maintenance person, but I believe that person only does cleaning, interior.
Right.
And it was, it was very icy on Saturday, and he had clearly been there and put down sand and salt and made everything passable for the event on Saturday. I, I can't say enough good things about his worth. And I've only been here a relatively short time, and I've been incredibly impressed by him. Anything that we've asked for, some strange requests, including with the bathroom that needed to be removed, and he keeps rising to the occasion. He put in a lot of hours over the course of that emergency situation. And I mean, anything that you, that you ask him to do or that you need help with, he's right there. He was helping the, the people that were fixing the heating system at the fire department last week, too. He needed to help them with the water shut off and everything, and he's, he's really doing a phenomenal job. As far as managing all the facilities like that, too, where I think it would help us out is because right now, he was budgeted at $11,700 roughly for the year. And what we're probably going to find is that at the end of the year, between his normal hours plus these unforeseen events that have come up, including even just the snowstorm that we had, we may get to a spot where we end up going over that. And I guess my proposal would be if we were to increase him to 20 hours next fiscal year. I think that we could work it out with him and say, okay, you need to manage your hours and know that you are budgeted for 20. So, if you know that there's a snowstorm coming, say on a Wednesday, maybe you spend a little less time at the townhouse earlier in the week, and you know that you're going to be working those extra hours. So, we wouldn't keep having the overages that we're having now. It's, it's planning ahead and being a little bit more practical. What does, what do these services actually cost? And that's, that's the answer. It's about $20,000. But that would be for all, all the buildings. I mean, he's already doing the stuff outside the library, anyway. I think that John made an excellent point about the Historical Society. My assumption would be that from a liability standpoint, that we own it, it's ours. So, I think we're better off being in control as far as the maintenance and knowing that we're doing, doing the right thing. And I don't know, I think if we had 20 hours to work with, with him, he'd be better positioned for success. It wouldn't be, you know, trying to call him in at the last minute if something happened, or if there was a storm, or something like that. He would have those hours to work with. And I think we would need to go into it with him with the expectation that it's not 20 hours plus snowstorm coverage. Obviously, every emergency you can't foresee, but something like a storm and snow removal, or laying down sand and stuff, those are all things that are pretty foreseeable. And so, I think developing a plan with him to say it's 20 hours inclusive of, you know, snow, snow removal and management, those types of things, so that we can have sort of a set amount. Obviously, an emergency may happen. I mean, you can't account for a pipe bursting or something like that. But I think just in the general course of business, it, it makes sense, as opposed to having overages every time we get a snowstorm or that kind of thing. I mean, his responsibility list is growing, honestly, with every passing day. And the amount of stuff he did when the pipe burst, I mean, he was up there in the ceiling insulating the pipes. That would have cost us a fortune if we had to wait for somebody to come out. The cost for materials and labor, especially in emergency response over a holiday weekend, and he was here and knows, okay, I'm going to go to Home Depot and get the stuff I need to get. And he's, he's very talented. He has that skill set, and he was here and he got it done for us. And I think that the amount that he's saving in that regard, I mean, even with the ceiling tiles, we are getting prices and everything, but he's capable of doing the ceiling tiles, and he's offered his help. So, you know, I just think it would be nice to take advantage of somebody who's in-house, who's already invested in the community and clearly trying to be helpful. But that's just my, my two cents on it, probably a little, a little longer than it needed to be. But John and I did run the numbers today, so that's what you'd be looking at.
Hang on the roof and clean our gutters.
Is he interested in the additional hours?
Yes.
Yes, he's expressed it.
The rain wasn't coming down properly, so he went up there and he cleaned all our gutters.
If you had seen this building last Tuesday, Bridgette was here, John, John and I were here, you never would have thought that we would be open to the public on Wednesday. I mean, we knew that the town clerk's office was unable to open. There would have been nowhere for them to work. There were contractors there and barrels and everything, but he had this place shining Wednesday morning. And early, too, because I get here quite a bit earlier than, than when we opened the doors. And, I mean, everything was sparkling. It was like, other than the, the missing ceiling tiles and the stuff outside of his control, it was like it had never even happened. Like, the floors were clean, everything was vacuumed. It was a mess, like, over the weekend and Tuesday especially. You know, and that was all taken care of. But just the amount of savings that we're seeing as far as like insulating the pipes and, and just having the foresight to do some of that stuff, I think that that's noteworthy.
Excellent.
I mean, independent of the person themselves, I think this is a smart decision, since we own the buildings. I think it was just, maybe it made sense at the time the original contract was written, but given the things that are going on now, it just makes sense.
Yeah, having it centralized, having someone knowing who's in charge and who's responsible.
Who's going to do it, that was right.
I mean, we confronted a situation a year and a half ago when the selectmen were shoveling the, the library and...
And the Historical Society Building, yeah. Because who was going to do it? We didn't have anybody.
Right. Now, the library...
He did, because he's, when we did that, we told him it was part when he took the job. So, he did shovel the front and the back door of the library.
Yeah, and the library, I mean, when I got there Saturday morning, it was, you know, you could tell that we were recovering from a storm, but there was sand and salt down, which was good, and there were no incidents.
Great.
So, so the issues are, one, that we want to change the lease in terms of we'll deal with maintenance.
Right.
And then, two, offer these hours to Steve.
Steve.
Right.
Just back to the, the lease, are we, I'm not sure it's clear, but I think if we're changing the lease, we're going to make it clear that we're going to be responsible for the, the routine maintenance of the building in terms of...
Yes.
Everything, windows.
So, under maintenance and utilities, we'll have to rewrite that.
Just rewrite it a little bit.
Which, which then brings my last question. Our utilities right now are being paid for by PHS.
Yes.
And are we going to leave that that way?
My, it's open discussion, my, I think so, because somebody has to, you know, it's not used full-time. So, what happens is if people leave and they leave the lights on, they stay on all day, all night. Once in a while, if Colleen Thompson sees it, she'll run across the street and shut them off. Yeah. So, I think it should still be the responsibility of the PHS to...
I'm not very comfortable with that. I think that goes back to knowing who's in charge of what and who feels like they're responsible. So, essentially rewriting the lease would be just making clear that we're taking care of the, the ongoing maintenance of the building and the weekly maintenance within.
Right.
Now, I completely agree with that. With the usage, it says the society may offer the use of the site to other local organizations for events, meetings. Should it be the society, or should it be the town, where it's our building? I mean, I think we should coordinate, but I don't know if they should necessarily...
I don't know if we want to get into that, though. I mean, if they're willing to do it as part of the lease, because they do Zumba, they do yoga, they do the scouts at times, they had a book club.
So, are they going to have them fill out, if we're going to create a form, and they're going to have this form filled out?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're going to get a form that the Denit School uses now, because if they have the scouts in, let's say, they have a form that you fill out, says what the responsibilities of the party taking it. And so, Elizabeth is going to work with Jessica Kinsman.
Okay.
Okay, and come up with a form, and then I think they bring it back and we would okay it for the lease, probably put it as an addendum.
Okay.
So, I'm not suggesting that the lease changed tonight, except that we're in agreement that that's where we want to go.
And then we could start maybe working on a new draft.
Yeah.
That incorporates most, this, most of this language, but with the changes that we're discussing.
That makes sense, I think.
And then come back to this body and we also need to get them on the...
Yeah, perfect. On the insurance, should it be clear that they are to insure the contents, that we only do the building? Because we're not going to insure the contents.
I hadn't thought about that.
We may want to put some kind of a disclaimer in there, that it's, you can say the town shall continue to hold insurance on the building as is now in place, and then maybe something to the effect of, please note that the town is not responsible for the contents.
For the historical content.
The historical contents, yes.
Because that's theirs, it's not ours.
Right.
But also, if there was ever a situation where somebody, even people's personal property, if you're there taking an exercise course and, I don't know, you misplace your purse or something, and then the next thing you know, you know, it's all who's responsible. I think we should say we're also not responsible for, as far as the people utilizing the facility for their personal property, for the loss or theft.
Right.
I assume that would be in the use form, too.
Yes, and that should be in there as well.
Would people that use the building be required to have insurance?
That's an interesting one, and that's always a hot topic with different, with different groups.
Some do, but I doubt Zumba does, and I doubt yoga does.
But I bet that they, I, most...
I think the scouts do. They would.
They do?
But I would think they do, that they would have insurance.
I don't know.
Yeah, I would think they do.
A few entities do, just as sort of a general practice to protect themselves, but a lot don't. And that is, that is something to think about. I would imagine that in the use form, you could put something that indicates that they're using it at their own risk and that the town will be held harmless for, you know, any kind of physical injury, things like that. I don't know how well stuff like that holds up in a real-world setting, if it was actually put into play. But plenty of places have things like that in place. At the very least, you are having them sign acknowledging that the town bears no responsibility in that regard.
Or something like that, okay.
Basically, be treating the Historical Society kind of like the managing partner of the building.
Alright.
Okay, so, I guess we don't vote until we come back with a revised lease and then vote it?
Perfect.
Good, good.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Use form, too, when people use town property?
Good.
I could give you a...
Yeah, that'd be good.
That would be helpful, because we've been waiting for a bit now to get the, the draft of the form that, that John and I had requested. So, if we could have something to go on, it would be good.
They've done little things around, like the town green or...
That would be helpful. Yeah, anything so that we're not reinventing the wheel would be.
Good.
In the interim, though, we can tell Steve to go ahead and, and once a week.
Do we want to vote to increase the hours of that position? Or that's actually not till next year, right?
Well, next year, we would budget for it formally for 20 hours per week, assuming that we're, that we're onboard with that. For this year, to have him add roughly five hours a week to his schedule, and that's assuming a 15-hour work week. Some weeks, it's less. Some weeks, he's here about 12. So, it kind of varies. But looking, being conservative about it, worst-case scenario, it would be adding about $2,100 on for this year.
And he would start maintaining the Historical Society Building and continue doing the library?
Town as well as this building.
Right.
Okay.
Now, the library is the exterior.
Right, just the exterior.
If that person was to leave, then we could, we could fit Steve in there, too.
Okay.
Do we need a vote?
Well, we, we what, increasing him to 15 hours, not to exceed 15 hours a week?
No, he's at 15 now.
He's at roughly 15 now.
Okay, so not to exceed 20?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what about, he'll be eligible for benefits right away. Does that $2,000 include benefits for this year?
That doesn't. What if we, what if you took a vote that said to increase his hours to take on those additional responsibilities? What if you said not to exceed 19 hours per week? And then, commencing July 1st, we will budget him for next fiscal year properly as a 20-hour-per-week employee. That way, we don't get into trouble with benefits right now, like midstream.
Okay, alright, so I'll make a motion that we increase the town...
Custodian.
Custodian to, not to exceed 19 hours per week to maintain this building, to do exterior maintenance of the library, and to do interior and exterior maintenance of the Historical Society Building.
I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. Good suggestion.
Good.
So, at some point, we're going to need to, I need to ask FinCom for money.
Well, we think we have enough in buildings and maintenance.
You do, yes.
I think what we do is, is I think you sit with Barbara and figure out.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
Because I can do that.
We'll, we'll sit with Barbara first.
Okay, okay. Alright, go ahead, John.
Before I leave the historical?
Sure.
So, we're, we talked about doing the exterior of the Old Town House over. We have a meeting with CPC tomorrow. John Wilhamsen will be joining me. Did we ever take an official vote that this is going to be part of the Board of Selectmen?
No, I don't think we did.
And I guess what I'm looking for is, we're, the presentation that's coming in tomorrow to CPC says that the Plimpton Board of Selectmen are the sponsoring organization. And I just want to get it on record that we're in agreement.
That we are the sponsoring, okay.
And I guess I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Sure.
That, that the Board of Selectmen is the applicant to CPC?
Yes.
Perfect.
For the renovation of the exterior of the Old Town House.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
I do, second. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Beautiful.
Okay.
And Mark, for you, John made a few adjustments. I'll send this out tonight to you guys.
Great, and I'll, I'll get it to the committee tomorrow. The goal there would be, would be to go over that, review it, hopefully, schedule a public hearing for February. The big thing, actually, this will be the first time the Board of Selectmen has been the applicant for CPA-funded project. And I'll just remind the board that the piece in being the applicant is, is not only to help usher it through the committee, but then to sell the project to the town when we get to town meeting.
I'm ready.
Good.
Perfect. Hi, Steve.
The man of the hour.
Ta-da.
Thank you so much for all your efforts.
You're welcome.
Everything you've done, it is truly appreciated.
Should we tell them about the vote?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yes, we...
They just voted to increase you to 19 hours per week.
For the remainder of this year?
For the remainder of the year.
The fiscal year.
The fiscal year.
And then, starting July 1st, it would be 20 hours with benefits.
Now, the 20 hours, we have to go through FinCom, obviously.
Yes, but that's how we budget it.
Right.
Through FinCom. The idea is that you would do the Old Town House.
Speaking of which, who's in there today?
Lights on?
Geez, I wonder if we could get a timer for those. It seems to be a chronic problem.
Zumba was in, yeah, we, we should. Zumba was in there this morning.
Turn off automatically.
Yeah. Yeah, we should have it set for like two hours now.
Yeah.
I'll get one of the motion, the little motion sensors, so that if nothing's moving...
They turn off?
Yeah.
The ones inside will do that?
Yeah, you can get them.
The bathroom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should do that, because I'm sure we're wasting so much energy.
Good. You okay with that?
With things on.
Okay with...
Additional hours?
Yeah, yeah.
Great, great.
I thought, well, I'm wondering who's shutting the lights off tonight?
Yes, I go by it.
Oh, yeah, because you're here, huh?
I'll do it. Yeah, I'll do it.
I don't have a key to it.
It's in the, it's in the receptacle.
I don't, I don't know the combination. I don't know the combination.
We can tell you that.
Do you have a key to that building, or do you have to go in through the back?
I would go through the box.
Through the box, it's all set, okay.
I'll do it. I mean, it's, you know, it'll take five minutes.
Okay. But, yeah, you'll have to give me the combination so that I could do it, too.
I thought I sent it, I know I sent it out to you.
Maybe you did.
But it's so easy.
One and no one.
Oh, okay.
One and no one.
Sure I do. Oh, that's so cute.
Oh, yeah, that would be one of my, you want to check that one? No, it's only a three-digit.
Is it still?
Zero.
Yeah, yeah, I want to change it to the.
Seven eight one?
Yeah.
I'm just watching this.
Say it a little louder.
It's on cable.
Now we got to pick a different number.
Yeah, now you got to pick, but don't say it.
And I thought that was so creative.
Keep it to yourself.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Class 2 and 3 license renewals. Do you have anything new?
Yes, just the two outstanding ones. So we have Kerry's all set. And we have Competition.
Okay.
Hey, can I go back to the PHS Building?
Absolutely.
Or the Old Town House?
Sure.
We need to think about going ahead, what we're going to call that building. Because now we're really using two different names. It has been called the PHS Building. It has been called the Old Town House.
What does your application call it?
I call it the 1850-Old Town House.
Okay, well, I'm just throwing it out there.
It shouldn't be called the, it shouldn't be called the Historical Society, because they don't own it.
Right, it's our building.
Okay, I mean, I agree, and I think we just need to get that into our vocabulary. Old Town House.
Old Town House is fine.
And this will just come up in terms of the CPC advertising and.
It's Old Town House, then.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
So it was never a school?
Yes, but it was originally built as a townhouse.
Okay.
And then they did have school in.
Okay.
It's the first townhouse.
Is it?
Yes, because prior to the 1850 townhouse being built, everything, all town meetings were done in the church.
Oh, really? Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so.
Is it the, do you need to vote on this? Is this, because in here, it says Old Town Hall.
In the lease?
No, it does. That's a mistake.
We can fix it.
Oh, yeah.
We'll fix that when we rewrite it.
Yeah, it's Old Town House.
Okay.
Okay.
I like that.
Okay, I like that.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no worries. It's a clarification.
Are we signing here?
Do we need to vote? No, I don't think we need to vote.
No.
For the name, no. All right, so we need motions to approve these Class 2 licenses for Roger Randolph, doing business as Competition Auto Body, and Michael Carey, doing business as Carey Auto.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, do we have any Common Bitlers license renewals?
No, we just have one outstanding item on that, so that will be taken care of tomorrow. There's the hours.
Two points.
Thank you.
With the townhouse being closed and the holidays coming up, so everything should be settled with that tomorrow. We can put it on the next agenda.
Perfect, so the 22nd?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, Town Administrators' update.
Okay. We already went over the water pipe break and the generator. One of the items that had come up, apparently John had done a site visit to Hayward Company LLC regarding the earth removal permit.
Yeah, Buck Cowling and I went out.
Yes, and the town is holding a bond with the Treasurer's Office for that, and they would like it released. So Bree had asked a little bit about the process, what that would be. We talked with Colleen a little bit earlier today, and I think the best course of action would be for the Board to take just a simple vote. You could even do it tonight, and just acknowledge that the work, that everything was in order, and that you would like to release the bond, the performance guarantee. And then if you take that vote tonight, I can help Bree draft a letter to Colleen, which she keeps for her records. And that, in turn, should trigger her to dealing with the financial piece on her end, because there's actually, the money was actually deposited in a bank account. So that would be my suggestion to get them, get this basically off the agenda. It's kind of been a standing item, and I know that they've been waiting for it to be released.
Okay. So you were satisfied? I had been there last year. It looked great to me.
Yeah, I mean, there were piles, same piles.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't see anything that jumped out.
And no work is commencing with gravel removal and?
Not that we could be aware of.
Okay, and if they were to apply, then we would have to review a bond at that point. But as of right now, it looks like everything's done.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I'll make a motion that we start the process to release the bond, that we, the town holds for the Hayward Company or the Hayward Company?
Hayward Company LLC. Well, that was at least the email signature that was on the.
I believe that's what it's on the line, too.
On the back and forth. So, yeah, if it's to release the performance guarantee, and then we can put that in writing to Colleen. We'll say that, you know, on January 8th, 2018, the Board of Selectmen voted such and such to release the bond. And we can also put something in there. We can copy the applicant on it and put something in there that any new work will require a completely new application process.
Perfect, I would definitely want to include something. Okay.
So you made a motion?
I made the motion, right.
In a second?
All right.
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. All right, anything else, Liz?
I've been working on all of our budgets. I sat with Barbara, so I'm off and running on that. They're due to FinCom by the end of the month, and then I'm scheduled to present our budgets, and it's up to the Board if anybody wants to come along or not, on February 26. My way of thinking with this, where it's my first time doing it, and also because I'm sure you were used to being involved in the process, I was going to prepare drafts of all of them, present them to you on January 22nd at our meeting, and just get kind of the okay that everything looks good to the Board. And then that would be what I would turn in to FinCom by the end of the month, with any edits that the Board saw necessary. The only real points that I'd be looking for guidance for, for the meeting on the 22nd, I'll need to know if we would be going with the standard, sort of whatever Wage and Personnel does as far as a cost of living and a merit-based increase for Steve, which that was already factored into the dollar amounts we were discussing with Steve. Those amounts included that. And also for Bree, and also for myself, because I think the way my contract is worded, I would receive a performance evaluation by May to go into effect in November. But I don't know, that timing doesn't really jive with the budget process for this year. It looks like the following years were on a normal track.
Okay.
But just based on my start date and those November dates. So I would be fine to go along with whatever Wage and Personnel did, if that makes it easier for the Board. But certainly if you wanted to discuss that further with me, or debate it amongst yourselves, or whatever you need to do for that. But I would just be looking for some guidance, dollar-wise, so that I can prepare those budgets for the end of the month. So that's pretty much it as far as budget discussion for now. I have a meeting with South Coast Managers.
Can I go back to that for just a second?
Sure.
Because I'll be away on the 22nd, and something, it's great that this will be discussed, because in previous years, the town coordinator never quite got to presenting to the Board what he was proposing. So it's kind of nice that.
That we'll know ahead of time?
Yeah, a little bit of input. But one thing that sort of comes up every year is we always run into these sort of, some discretionary money for us, like if we want to send out a mailing or something like that. And I would hope maybe we can include a small amount, whether a separate line or within one of our lines, just for stuff that comes up.
We do have a miscellaneous line item, and part of what I was going to do, I think that's a great idea, and part of what I was going to do is sit down with Barbara and kind of refine a little bit some of the smaller line items within expenses, because we have a lot of subcategories, and some don't look like they're used with all that much frequency, and others are utilized more often. So I think kind of refining that, and it also helps with transparency, too. Then people have a little bit more of an idea of where the money is going. What is the actual cost for what you're doing? The other suggestion I had received from both John and Barbara was that for my line item, my salary line item is there, but they had suggested breaking out my expenses for, say, attending a conference or my professional association memberships, doing that kind of separately so that the townspeople have an idea of what the cost is that's actually associated with the position, rather than kind of tucking them all into the Selectmen's budget. And then also, too, so that my stuff is sort of separate and kind of earmarked for certain things, and it's not interfering with things that the Board chooses to do. So that was one suggestion that John and Barbara had.
It's a really good one.
So I was going to move along in that fashion, but certainly present everything to you folks. And I can send it to you before the 22nd, so that you have time to digest it and determine if we need to make edits.
Well, do you want to talk about the wage recommendation tonight, where you're not going to be around?
That's fine. Do we know the number? Is there a recommendation? Are we going for 2%?
I noticed, though, that the police are using 2%. Now, I believe that's built into the contract.
Yeah.
But.
They had, so I was under the impression initially that they would be looking to do a 2 and 2. And then Barbara had said that she got the sense that they might be willing to entertain a 2 and 1/2, too. So we could kind of proceed, we could either give FinCom two sets of numbers, one with a 2 and 2, one with a 2 and 1/2 and a 2. Or we could go with the 2 and 2, and, you know, if they change it, then it would change across the Board anyway, and FinCom would obviously be aware of that. I don't think they take their vote till March. Wage and Personnel.
Oh, that's tough.
Yeah, so that's why, and that's where I'm running into with my contract, because it mentioned an evaluation possibly in the May timeframe, and I said, oh, the budget would be long decided, and we'd be.
I would recommend we go with 2 and 2, and if there's an adjustment later, we'll just uplift it.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Are you, that's helpful for me if I know now. I don't want to rush you with anything, but for Bree, Steve and I, it does factor into the numbers.
That sounds great to me.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Very good.
Good.
Okay.
And I'll check in with you.
Okay. All right, so anything else, Liz?
So I'm going to South Coast Managers' meeting Wednesday afternoon. And that's a little bit different than South Shore Managers'. Some of the same people, and then some slightly different.
So these are town managers?
Yes. I'm attending the Bylaw Review Committee meeting Thursday evening.
That'll be interesting.
Because that was rescheduled, so that'll be good to get up to speed. I did finish the job description for Highway Superintendent. I worked with Jim on that, and then I took John's suggestion that he made to me, just as far as the education requirements. So I'll send out a final draft. And then if at some point the Board decides that you want him in for another meeting, we can set that up. But on our end, we're ready to go with the job description.
Great, great job.
And.
Looks good.
Does look good. Looks really good.
The only other point was that we had the issue with the Internet today, which some people were aware of. We were able to submit payroll. We got back online. Bree called Comcast, and apparently the modem, it's about seven years old, and for whatever reason, we were not receiving the adequate bandwidth and the speeds necessary. I'm not an IT person by trade, so some of the terms were a little odd to me. But Bree wrote down all the numbers. Long story short, they're upgrading the service. They didn't even have us down as a government entity. So the Internet service that we had before was meant for maybe four users.
Oh, two and a half words.
And we're all logging in on this and doing email and making a lot of positive progress technology-wise. But today, there was a full failure of the system. So after quite a bit of time on and off the phone with Comcast and with our IT person, we were able to straighten it out. But they will be switching out the modem tomorrow and upgrading us. And they now have us as a government entity that actually has people logging in and using the Internet, so.
Great.
So that's that.
Currently at 16?
Yeah, these are the numbers, yeah, 16, whatever the.
16 in and 16 out?
16, yeah, we're supposed to be at 100 for one of them.
And we should be 100 in and 20 out.
Yeah.
Oh, good. Well, that should make things better when you guys get the new modem.
And then what else? Our firewall, was it a low port speed? We should be running 1,000 per second. Are we running at 100?
Yeah, so we're back on track with that.
Great, good progress.
It was, it was. It's kind of, it's in the assessor's office, and we had to stand where it needs to be. So they were looking to clean it up and possibly put just some wooden shelves Steve could build.
That was something we were wondering if Steve could maybe help them within the assessor's office. I guess the equipment needs to be ventilated.
Yes.
So you can't just shut it in a closet or something like that. So we were thinking maybe Steve, Wendy started today. So we were thinking maybe Steve could coordinate with them up there and just maybe build some very basic, just shelving for it, to get it up off the floor.
We need to have Michael, though, come in first.
We need him there at the same time, too, to make sure that no wires get.
Because.
Which you can and cannot do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They were looking to rearrange that office, too, to kind of maybe put the table, even if it was spread across it.
No, why don't you guys, yeah, coordinate with Mike and Steve?
Yeah, it's in kind of a heap on the ground, and everything's getting kind of dusty and.
Anything on the ground if water came in, ugh.
It seems to me that when the police station is built, we need to take a look at this whole place. And, you know, that's the time we should actually, if we're going to put that in a separate sort of room or cabinet or whatever, because when you go up and see it, I wouldn't want to mess with it right now. There's wires all over the place.
When she had me under there, I pulled out a thing that wasn't plugged in.
Oh, I was crawling around on the ground to undo the Wi-Fi, and I'm like, I hope this is it. I'm plugging stuff. We're back online now. Everything's fine.
Oh, man.
We unplugged it. I said, no, and she plugged it back in, and all of a sudden it came on, and I just, they said, go tell her to submit payroll.
Go, go, go!
I said, everyone get off the Internet.
Oh, my gosh, crazy.
That was a little, when she said that to me, how many people do you have? How many pieces of equipment? I said, 15. She said, you're.
That's really crazy. I can't believe that.
A three?
All this time.
We.
We'll get there, though.
Yeah, we will. We will get there.
Even just in the short time I've been here, I'm very impressed with all the work that everybody's been doing here, but that John was doing with Tara, kind of on some of the IT stuff and everything. We're getting there.
We need Michael, though, to really sit down. I don't know if he's at Lucens, he's got other customers, obviously. But to sit down and, computers. We got the grant. We said we're going to replace the computers. We got things that should be Bodankers out there.
But this still hasn't been done.
Still.
Yeah, we got the money.
He's coming in tomorrow.
The email addresses.
Okay.
We're still waiting on that.
But he needs to get Wendy set up tomorrow. That's kind of, that's something that needs to happen.
Right away.
Quick.
Yeah.
So she's up there now. She started today. So he's coming tomorrow. So that part's good timing, at least.
I have him come in and sit, maybe I can schedule something.
Good, maybe just to have a strategic plan for where we're going with all this stuff.
Exactly, and what we need to prioritize, and, yeah.
Yeah, they need to coordinate.
We need your whiteboard.
Yes, we need the whiteboard. Ordered.
Ordered, done.
Okay.
It's going to be a list that goes up the wall and across the ceiling.
Oh, my goodness.
Ordered your whiteboard.
We're getting there.
Steve White.
All right. What do we have on correspondence?
MMA, it's kind of the final call for that. So if anybody's interested, let me know and I can register you online and have the town sent an invoice for it as opposed to you having to pay and do a whole reimbursement thing.
Okay.
It looks like more of your programs are on Saturday, the 20th, but that's that. We have a letter dated January 3rd, 2018 from residents that reside on Main Street here in town praising Plimpton Police Officer Doug Mazzola. So that's more praise for Officer Mazzola for a job well done. And they go into quite some detail about his character and professionalism. So that's nice to see. And where this came in is a paper copy. Bree, we should probably send a copy to Chief Dillon, just so that they have it for their file.
We can put it in his file, exactly.
Yeah, that was dropped off in our mailbox. So somebody took the time to even.
Yeah, so that's really nice.
Very nice. Very nice.
We have the warrants. They were all signed and submitted totaling $5,255.19. We also received the notification from Maya, more in regard to their meeting, annual meeting on January 20th. If you want to vote for any of the membership that comprises some of their executive boards, you do have the ability to do that. It looks like they wanted it by today, but I'm sure if we scanned and emailed it, we could do that. But everything looks pretty standard. I did look through this today. And it appears that most of the people are seeking reelection to the same things that they were a part of. Nothing stood out to me that much as far as people from the area. I did note that the Halifax Select Woman is on one of their committees. So at least it's some area representation. But we do have that. And then Plimpton Halifax Express, there was quite a bit of Halifax news in it. One of the more noteworthy points, the Council on Aging here in Plimpton is looking to host, to be a host agency for Citizens for Citizens. And they are currently hiring seniors age 55 plus who meet certain criteria to help with their Meals on Wheels program and/or serve as a receptionist. So if anybody's looking for a job opportunity, they can go over the special criteria with you. And if you meet the criteria, that may be a good fit for you. So contact the Plimpton Council on Aging. They have an office here at the Town House and they would be happy, I'm sure, to walk you through that process.
Is that on the website, do you know?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to have it on the website?
We can put a note on the website. They did take out an ad in the Express. So maybe we can contact Joy Marble and find out if she has it electronically. That way we don't, we can just put exactly the ad. We can post it.
That'd be smart.
So that people are aware of that. And that pretty much wraps up correspondence. We have the email from the fire chief about the dent. But I think we've sufficiently talked that point. So.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, dates to remember, we are meeting, our next meeting will be the 22nd. So we are not meeting next week, but we will be meeting the 22nd. And then we are not meeting the 29th. We'll be back on the 5th of February. Next item is our board's goals for coming years. I didn't know if you guys wanted to talk about it. We have hit some of them and I didn't know if you wanted to take them off and put some new goals on there. Because we had financial management, we had volunteerism, we had.
Public safety.
Public safety, grants and technology.
Seems like they're still vibrant right now.
Well, there's one that I'd like to add. I'd like to add economic development.
Sure.
You know, just start doing something and I'd like to work with the Colony Planning Council and possibly get one of those, that thing they did for Pembroke where they had.
I gave that to.
Yeah, to professionalize, you know, the town and show opportunities. That's just one that I would like to consider. Us trying to offset some of this, our tax base and get some more businesses in here.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. So what do you think, John? Or I'm sorry, John, I'm, Mark.
No, I totally agree. And now that we have Town Administrator and I think just touching base on that each meeting and at least that it's on the radar screen and we're thinking about it. And maybe it's proactive a decade hence, but, you know, that's how we ended up with Cisco from people decades before visioning. So.
Yeah, and the police station and everything.
Yep.
All right. So do you want to continue with financial management, public safety, grants, volunteerism, technology? And then just add economic development?
Sure.
That's good.
You want to add anything else?
You know, let me think about that. I think we want to be careful not to have too many. So that's probably more than enough. But I'd like to think, I'd like to think, I'd like to think about it. Make sure there isn't anything big.
Okay. Well, you know, we, grants is kind of something we're always working on. But it's not something that every week is going to be something to report. I mean, we're always looking for grants.
Yeah, it just felt like we don't have a strategy vis-à-vis grants. And that's maybe.
Yeah, we don't.
You know, I think you had contacted Heidi there, that lady, and I guess that's kind of gone by the wayside.
That's kind of gone by the wayside.
So maybe we need to be, since that probably goes by academic year and we're probably looking at September for her next one, maybe if we start now on that, then.
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay, working with Heidi? All right, let me reach out and see.
Yeah, if she'll work with us.
Okay, okay. All right. And I'll copy you in, Liz, on my communication with her. Okay, so it may change, may be tweaked, but we'll add economic development. Okay. All right, so next is minutes.
Could I, I think maybe I should give you just the timeline on public safety.
Oh, yeah, right.
Because stuff's going to begin to happen there.
Perfect.
So they're meeting again the 17th, which is a week from now. I'll probably miss that meeting. That's the final plans, the final bid packet. The rest of the timeline, February 14th, the subcontracting bids will come in. They'll come in to us, to your office. And the fellow will be in that day, I think, to open them. The bottom line is February 28th, the general contractor bids come in. So at 2:05 PM, they get opened. Hopefully there's one that fits. And assuming that's the case, we start breaking ground the end of March. So suddenly.
A lot is happening. That's exciting.
But Bree, you'll have the expectation that in early February, you'll get the subcontract bids. And then late February, the general contractor bids.
Okay.
So it's happening.
It's going to be exciting.
That's super exciting.
Do we have a timestamper machine in this building? I'm sure Tara has one.
Yeah, I'm sure Tara has one.
That might be something. When those bids come in, I don't think we should just do, we can do the received stamp that says Board of Selectmen. But I think that when those come in, we should probably run to Tara and stamp it. Because some of those bids, especially with the general contractor ones, I've seen a lot of this. Some of them wait until, I mean, the 11th hour, like two minutes left. Like if they're due at 11:00 AM, somebody comes running in at 10:56 and they need something stamped so that they can prove to their company that the delivery was.
On time.
Was made. So that's something to.
Some of them I signed for before.
That's not a problem. Some places will ask you to sign almost like a transmittal letter that says that you got it. That's fine. But the actual outer envelope, we can't open any of them. They have to stay sealed, but we should try to shove part of the envelope. Or if you can't fit, if you can't fit the envelope into Tara's timestamper, we could also timestamp a piece of paper and then like affix it to the outside. You can't mess with the envelope at all, but.
I know.
That can get pretty serious as far as the general contractor bids and it's something.
When I was selling to the Commonwealth, that was a requirement. It had to be timestamped.
Okay.
Or they would assume it wasn't delivered.
If the bids, so the packages haven't gone out to anybody yet, right?
No, they will, no.
I don't want to put more on Tara's office. I'm just wondering if for ease of, if they may want to consider, I'm sure that she's the only one who has an official that gives you to the minute or to the second.
It can't be a big deal to timestamp them though.
No, no, we just got to make sure that we're catching people, especially on the day that they're due. Like as they come in the door, divert them there.
Put a big sign in the lobby.
Yeah, to get it.
Contract bids.
If you're dropping your bid off.
Yeah.
Had a timestamp by the town clerk's office. Okay.
Yeah, we can do that. And then we can use our stamp, but our stamp just won't be as official as.
Okay.
She does have one. It's brand new. It was mandated because of the elections.
Okay.
Oh, good.
She's been speaking and she said she'd get it working.
Okay. Yeah, and if we can't fit an envelope in it, you can timestamp a blank sheet of paper and just affix it.
Perfect.
But yeah, we do need to, and you can't open anything.
Okay, great. All right, so let's quickly review financial management. There's really nothing new except that we have created a financial management team made up of Elizabeth, Barbara Gomez, Colleen Moran and Wendy Jones, correct?
She'll be part of it too.
Part of it, okay. And you'll be meeting with boards and committees as part of the budget process?
Yeah, so what we're aiming for is to have it be sort of an internal group of us that are going to be dealing with the budget on a regular basis. John had offered to attend when we have our first kickoff meeting. I did not mention it to Wendy today. I only saw her for a brief amount of time when I was crawling around on the ground in her office. Trying to get the modem back on. So I just wanted her to get her foot in the door before.
Overwhelmed?
Before that. But yeah, I think within the next week, we should probably just have a kickoff meeting, go over some of our goals. And then we can kind of outline, I think, priority areas. And then you were on some of the correspondence back and forth with some of the school folks. It seemed like some people had a few different priority. I'm not sure if some people had a different idea kind of of what that meeting was going to be. I did reach out to Nate from FinCom and just let him know that the financial team was in no way a replacement for FinCom. We're not stepping on any toes. It's entirely different. It's just an internal group. And he was fine with that. So, yeah, we'll start meeting with people just to kind of make sure that nothing falls through the cracks.
Perfect. Great.
Is this a committee?
No.
No, it's just.
It's just an internal department heads.
Financial management team.
Yeah.
Okay.
Internal. All right, public safety. Mark already reported on that. Grants. We have been exploring grants for a generator as we discussed earlier and other grant opportunities that are applicable. So we're always looking at that.
Did we hear anything, you know, we had the Halifax grant, the regional efficiency.
Have not heard back on that yet.
Is there a timeline on that?
I'm not sure. I can look at it. I'll look to see when, or I'll reach out to him, see when they'll be making a decision.
Good.
Okay. And then volunteerism, I don't think there's anything really new to report. Anybody?
No.
No.
And I hope to put more energy into that this year.
That's your New Year's resolution?
It is.
Okay. All right, technology, we still have got some work to do with the grant.
Number of things we have to do. I'll follow up with Michael and see if we can get a sort of a plan.
Perfect. Fantastic. Okay, so we've got minutes from 11:27, 12:04 and 12:11.
You got a different sheet than I got? I got 12:11 and 18.
Yeah, that's because I'm looking at the old agenda because that's had the. All right, 11:27 and 12:04. And this actually says 12:11 as well.
Yeah, but you got December. Here, try this one. Here.
Here, thank you. My New Year's resolutions have my eyes shut. All right, 12:11 and 12:18, open session. And then we had executive session from 12:18. So did you, have you guys had a chance to read that?
I saw the 12:18 executive session. I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I thought those were good too. So I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from 12:18 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
The other two are pending.
Okay, so we'll hold the other two. So on the 22nd, we will have 12:11, 12:18 and 1/8. So we'll try to get all of those, get thought up. Okay, perfect.
12:11 is done.
Okay, all right. Do you want to just resend it? Okay. Rants and Raves?
Yeah, one thing, on that Halifax Express, wasn't there pictures of Officer Gaga? He went down, the police officer, Plimpton Police Officer, and helped shovel out the cars down at Woodman's.
Oh, Kenny, that was so nice.
I saw it somewhere. If it wasn't in there, maybe it was, it'd be in the middle.
I thought that it, this is from the 29th.
Oh, okay.
This is from December 29th. And that was the most up-to-date one that we had, correct?
Okay, so it's next week.
Next week? Okay.
Yeah, the week after.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so Rants and Raves, I'll go first. Got a rave and my rave is Projet. All of her hard work in helping us deal with this, the water pipe break here and the amount of time that she spent here, the coordination with Steve and ServPro to get the building up and running. Hats off to you, Bree. Great job.
It was. Very nice.
All right, who wants to go next? All right, Mark.
So I was in New York a couple of weeks ago and on the local TV in New York City, there were people lining up to try to pay their real estate taxes early. And it was so cold, so sterile, the little booths and the people taking the checks were so disinterested. And it was such a contrast to our cute little town hall and the neat, interested people in this building. And from going by the town clerk to going by now the town administrator and Bree's office and into the financial offices. And it was the exact reason we love living in Plimpton. That was a good reminder.
I have the same theme because it was, in a sense, fun to watch how, when the water pipe broke, how everybody just pitched in. You know, it was, everybody, nobody was saying, ah, do I have to do this or that? It was really good. So I think it's part of our community. I see lots of good things on Plimpton Helping Plimpton saying, love this community. I think it's great. Got to keep it that way.
Just one today?
Well, actually I have both five.
We're running late and Mark's yawning, so.
I have to go to the old townhouse.
Bree, what did you want to say?
I have a mass DOT that Jim had dropped off in the office.
What is that?
For the Chapter 90.
Okay.
If we could.
Just sign it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we can sign it. All right, so we are off next week, but we'll be back on the 22nd. Happy New Year to everyone, wishing you all the best in 2018. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right, good night.
Good night.